Can I like to call this meeting to order and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, ready for the roll call?
Commissioner Cadwalader?
Here.
Commissioner Salzweedl?
Here.
Commissioner Teelander?
Here.
Commissioner Gerard is absent tonight, and Chair Zanster?
Here.
Motion to excuse absent?
I'll second that.
All on favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, the motion carries. Um, let's move on to the approval of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, first or second, let me know. In favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, let's move on to the, um, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, February 8, 2006.
I'll make a motion to approve the previous, uh, meeting minutes.
All second? All on favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, it passes. Um, are there any public comments and our communications concerning the items that are not on the agenda today? Alright, if there are no more comments, I'd like to proceed. Alright, let's go through old business, um, the 2016 goals and priorities.
Uh, if you guys recall the last meeting, um, there was some discussion on this and generally, um, we're sort of focusing on the zoning ordinance, and we asked that I prepare a zoning ordinance audit, which is in process right now, it's not ready yet. So that will be coming probably for the next meeting in, uh, April.
I make a motion to table this until we can get, uh, hopefully next Monday, uh, two new members, so we can get some, uh, insight for them on what they might think some of our goals and priorities are for 2016.
I do, yeah, I would, I would like that, and I would like to say one thing, um, Dave and I were talking about that abandoned school right on the river, um, and looking at whether the zoning is, um, kind of conducive to more businesses moving in there.
As I understand it, I think that's zonal mixed use?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, because when, when we talked,
Yeah.
it was public facility, it had been public facilities beforehand.
Okay.
So I think with the mixed use, I think that that would be much better for future, future development.
Yeah, I mean, part of the reason why we went through the process with the mixed use in the first place was, was partly because, um, there were some ideas floating around for the use of that property, and the city wanted to make sure that it was, um, you know, that, like you said, it was conducive to a variety of reasonably compatible activities, so whether it be office or residential detail, or some combination thereof.
There seems to be some general interest in that, yes, to do commercial or residential.
Yeah, it's a great spot. Okay, well, I want to continue my motion.
That was a motion.
Yeah, I'll second that. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, let's move on. Um, new business, let's start with the public hearing, um, on the special land use for Mineral Street. And I'd like to, uh, open the public hearing, is there a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second that. All on favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, it passes. If anyone wants to speak, um...
It might be good to have Andy just give a brief overview on this too.
Oh, sure.
Sure, um, so this is for the parking lot, uh, the South Mineral Parking Lot, I believe we're calling it, uh, which is just across the street here, um, behind, um, the, uh, Community Barbecue and all of those, um, businesses over there, just on the east side of Mineral Street. Um, it's put together with about fifty, I think that number fifty-some-odd, um, parking spaces. Uh, we did review this against the zoning ordinance, and one thing to note that you guys probably also caught is that there is a requirement in zoning ordinance that says that any parking spaces must be set back, I believe twenty feet, uh, from any adjacent road right away. This proposal does not meet that, however, the last council meeting, uh, the City's zoning board of appeals did approve of variance, um, to allow the lot to be built basically in its current configuration. Uh, so that, that allows that one standard to be, to be not met in this case. Um, however, all the other standards of the zoning ordinance still would have to be met, and by all accounts, they are at this point. Um, so there's a memo in your, um, packet that I can summarize maybe after the public agenda, and after the committee, uh, to give their thoughts, we can come back to that, and then we can, uh, further deliberate, and if you're inclined to make a motion, you can do that.
Are there any public comments? Alright, if there are no, let's, no public comments, let's move to, um, your memo.
Does anybody want to see the plan? You want to see it? You've already agreed since, okay.
So I'll just kind of go over some of the, some of the highlights here, if you will. Generally, the property, this consists of a number of parcels, not just one, there's three or four or five involved. Not all of them are controlled by the city yet, as I understand it. So one of the suggested conditions of approval is that, of course, the city would have, uh, some control over all of the properties, obviously, before you can go forward. Um, so whether that be a long-term lease, or they own it outright, or whatever, um, that would have to be something that would need to be taken care of. Uh, generally, we're looking at about twenty-five thousand square feet, so less than an acre. Um, and this, this property is also in C2, which is your downtown business district type zoning. Um, so there's no minimum lot requirement, there's no minimum with requirements for the property, there's no building, so there's no setbacks to worry about, other than the one that I mentioned before. There are some landscaping requirements that are in the ordinance, um, it requires one landscaped island for twelve spaces, which has been shown on, on the site plan, and does meet that standard. Um, and then the other, other thing that I would like, uh, call your attention to is that because this is a special land use in the C2 district, any off-street parking, uh, off-street parking lot, if it's just a property that's only being used for parking, uh, would need to go through this special land use approval process. So, starting on the bottom of page one of my report, and continuing on, onto page two, there are four standards, uh, that the planning commission must find arm that, uh, before this can be approved, and so I'll just review those quickly, uh, with you guys. Uh, the first one says that it must be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious, and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and not change the essential character of the area in which it's proposed. This is used as a parking lot already, uh, so this, really, we're just looking at a, a significant improvement over something that's already in place. It'll be able to accommodate many more vehicles than is in place now, and, uh, there was a parking study that we completed last year that did indicate there was, uh, a, a projected efficiency overall in parking, um, within the city specifically in, in this area, so this also helps address that need. The second, uh, criteria says that it must be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, and so on and so forth. It's certainly accessible, it's, it's, it's right down the street, there are two millions of addresses and addresses. Um, there are no buildings, there aren't dwellings, there's nothing like that. So some of the other concerns are generally not applicable in this case. Uh, item three talks about how the use shall not create excessive additional requirements at public costs for public facilities and services. And obviously, this is, this is a, a public facility that we're talking about here, so there will be some public costs, it'll have to be maintained, it'll have to be, uh, while in the winter, the landscaping will have to be taken care of, the light poles will have to be taken care of, all that sort of maintenance types of things. Uh, but I think the key here is that this standard says that it, it shall not create excessive requirements. I think those are all pretty typical requirements for a public improvement like this. And then the last criteria is that it shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions that would be detrimental to a person's property or the general welfare by excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. And again, it's a part of the law we're talking about here. There may be some traffic, obviously, some additional traffic, because we're hoping to accommodate some additional traffic here, that's kind of the whole point. But again, are we talking about excessive production in traffic? No, I don't think so. Um, and again, overall, I think we're looking at, at a net benefit to the city with, um, because we're talking about providing additional parking for downtown, for, for people to, to patronize the businesses downtown, um, and to address that future projected efficiency of parking that we included as, as possible. The site-specific standards for a parking lot are in section seventeen point oh four S, and there's six of them there, I'm not going to go over each one of these one at a time. Um, number four is the one that I was calling your attention to earlier, where it says it shall have a front yard setback of twenty feet. That's the standard that is not met, but the variance was granted by the zoning board of appeals, uh, last Monday, I believe, and so that standard can be considered to be met for, for your purposes. Um, there's not really any residential zone property around it, the nearest one is four hundred and twenty feet to the east, not the west, to the east. Um, and so some of the technical issues that you would have with regard to parking lots, headlights, glare, things like that, noise, are going to be less applicable here because there is a fairly sizable distance between a lot and any other adjacent residential uses. So with that, I have, if you guys are so inclined, you can recommend approval of this. On the last page of that report are, um, five conditions, and these are all pretty standard. Um, the first three talk about, uh, no demolition or earthwork shall be undertaken until a building permit has been issued, um, prior to any permits, uh, all application permit escrow fees and so forth would have to be paid, uh, comply with all city, county, state, and other applicable regulations. Number four is the one that I wanted to call your attention to, that the city must control all parcels on the site before construction can begin, as I understand it, that is not the case currently. Um, so until that is met, this site, until the city controls all of them, then this site plan is not technically approved. Um, and then the last one is that, uh, there are some standards in zoning ordinance for the light poles themselves, there are a few light fixtures proposed here. Um, pretty standard, uh, type of fixture, and basically, I think the maximum height is twenty feet, and it has to be fully cut off, sort of a downward facing, uh, light fixture, so we're not casting glare all over the place. So that about concludes, uh, my remarks, and if you have any questions, let me know otherwise, um, or yours.
I have, I have a particular question, um, according to this, is everything's going to drain off to the south? It didn't look like there was any, any drainage for that, other than to just naturally drain to the south? Is that correct, and is that grassy area between that and, uh, whatever, that big parking lot is a gravel? I also, I went by there tonight, and there's still quite a bit of standing water just from the little rain we had, and, and what's going to happen when or two, one or two inches of rain come off that and go down, and it looks like there's the trees, and then there's the, uh, grass. Um, it looks like it's almost a natural runoff to the west, but then there's that firm right in the middle of it, prohibiting it from running. So I'm not sure what's looking to drain it off of that grass area, or is it going to go down into the, to the gravel part of it? It's, they got quite a bit of gravel in there now, it looks like they just added some more, so I'm not sure what that affects those people that own that property to run off.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, I know, um, the city engineers designed this, and so, um, I'm, I'm confident that that's something that they certainly took into account and performed the calculations. Um, as far as the, um, the exact, you know, math behind the, just the stormwater calculation, I don't know. But I think generally, yeah, you're correct, and it's, it's draining, it's draining to the south. There is a toxic element here, a concrete spillway that would also be located along the southern end of the, of the lot, um, but, but beyond that, I guess, I don't know specifically, you know, the, the calculations there, they're amazing, I don't know.
Also, it doesn't go directly to the river, right?
Right. I mean, the site generally drains from about, it drops about a foot and a half from the northernmost point to the southernmost point, a little more than that. Um, so generally, it'll, it'll all move south, and it'll, you know, leak directly into the river.
Any motion to approve it as for the recommendations?
Yeah.
I do that.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Second?
I'll sec, I'll second that.
All on favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Alright, it passes.
And, uh, it's my understanding that the, uh, the project is, is going to be going out for, is up, or without for bid, and, uh, once the issue on the property is taken care of, I'm sure you can...
Yes. Alright, let's move on to the, uh, second, second issue for public hearing, the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. So I'd like to invite anybody that'd like to speak on that, unless you guys have some...
Do you want me to give you a little bit of background first?
Actually, yeah, let's do that, yeah. Sorry to take you out there.
Excuse me one moment, do you want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, second, okay, sure, can I make a...
I'll make a motion to open it, okay?
I'll second.
All on favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, it passes.
Okay, so this has been something, as you guys know, we've been, we've been working on this since probably September, October of last year, um, and there's kind of several things that we're taking care of here all at once. Um, the real, the genesis of this whole project was that, um, as you guys know, Grand Rapids Gravel owns, uh, property on the south side of Bowles Road, on the southwest corner of the city that's adjacent to the township. Um, they're looking to do some work in that area, probably this year, I guess. And when we looked into this from a zoning perspective, we found that mining was not permitted in the industrial district, which is what this property is owned, but it was permitted within this floodplain overlay that the, that the township has. And so there was sort of a conflict there, in that our underlying zoning is disallowing something, and overlay is, is allowing something, which is backwards from the way that it, that it usually works. Um, and when we investigated this further, the actual language of the ordinance, the text itself, says that your floodplain district is, is an overlay, and it only applies to those properties or parts of those properties that are within that one-hundred-year flood zone. Um, well, when we looked at the map at the time, and even the map that's on the wall behind us, those property that, as you can see, there's no real, nothing follows the actual floodplain. So there are some properties that the entirety of which are zoned floodplain for reasons I have no idea why. Um, but the issue is that the map does not match up with what the text actually says. And that was something that I thought was pretty important to get taken care of in this case, and while, um, instead of just fixing the one issue with Grand Rapids Gravel and leaving the rest of the problem to sit, we thought it would be a better idea just to take care of the whole thing all at once. Um, so that's what we are proposing here, so, um, there is a zoning amendment that is in front of you, that ultimately, at some point, you would be recommending to, um, to the city council, yes, thank you, and so, um, it, it does a number of things. I'll kind of go through one at a time, what, what each section of this does. The first section simply allows for removal and processing of topsoil, stone, rocks, sand, gravel, lime, or other soil or mineral, mineral resources, so it allows mining basically as a special use within the industrial district, and that's all that first section does. Second section, which starts on the very bottom of that first page and carries on, actually, that's it, is it simply renames the title of chapter fourteen to floodplain overlay district. It adds that word overlay, which, um, I think is important just so it's clear when someone's looking at it that this is an overlay, it's not a conventional zoning district like all of them. The third section, um, is a fairly significant change to this floodplain overlay language, in that under section A, it says, uh, under uses permitted within the overlay. Um, it allows any use permitted in the underlying zoning district, whether by right or by special land use, has, is, is permitted within that district as it was before. So if there's something that is a special use in the underlying district, it would continue to be a special use if it's in the floodplain overlay. Um, and then item B just says that in addition to whatever standards apply to the underlying zoning district, there are an additional set of regulations that apply to the floodplain because that there is this unique characteristic that we need to, to, to be mindful of, that being that, that these are areas that are plump to flooding. Um, under section four, uh, we just kind of cleaned up some of the, of the language here, um, that talks about standards for development within the floodplain overlay. Again, this is not a, really, any sort of policy departure or change. Um, it's just cleaning up the language, so it's a bit easier to understand, in, in my opinion. So for example, it talks about development, um, within the floodplain overlay district, so it'll not occur except in accordance with the requirements of this section. Um, the way it was, it was here before, it was confusing grammatically, and it didn't make any sense to me, so this is just sort of something to clean that up. Um, under item three, those changes are simply just correcting the reference that referred to a repealed piece of state legislation from nineteen twenty-nine, or is fixing it, so it's referencing the correct act. Um, under item four, again, this is cleaning up the language, I don't know, previously it said, "The use pattern and instruction, and structure proposed to accomplish said use", I don't know what that means, uh, so I'm just writing that the proposed use or structures shall be so designed as to not reduce the water impalement capacity. So again, there's no real policy change, it's just cleaning up the language, so it's a bit easier to understand. Item five talks about utilities, off-street parking, railroads, and structures shall be designed so as to not increase the possibility of a flood. Again, no policy change, just makes the language a little bit simpler to understand, in my opinion. And then the last thing in this section under item two is just modernizing the name of the Flood Insurance and Mitigation Administration, FEMA, which is different from the Federal Emergency Management, or, yeah, Federal Emergency Management Agency, also counts FEMA, it's just so, so they can make it as confusing as possible. Um, the last section, or the last couple of sections of changes, um, these, under section five, these are specific changes that only apply to mining operations. So under item C1, item C, that says the earth removal will not alter predominant drainage patterns or cause drainage impacts on adjoining properties. This has been deleted because, um, this, to me, could be interpreted as that we would not even require a permit for something that wouldn't alter predominant drainage patterns. Well, that's, I don't know that that's appropriate, I mean, if they're taking out a huge amount of material, uh, even if it doesn't affect any neighboring properties, there still could be some, some significant impacts, whether we're talking about water table, environmental factors, um, drainage runoff, all those kinds of things. And so, we just deleted that exemption from item C here, and we moved it on to the next page, to number three, so it's now a standard that has to be met instead of something that could possibly be exempted. I don't think that was the intent of it originally, was to have this possible exemption, but I don't want to get into a situation where we're arguing that point either. Um, and, and this clarifies the, the language, so that we're all clear as to what this needs to accomplish, and what any proposed mining project we need to accomplish, and how it would need to be conducted. Um, under item twelve, um, this is something that, that, again, a lot of the mining operations that are proposed often come with some kind of plan that, that shows when the mining is complete, what are you going to do, are you going to leave it, are you going to build houses, are you going to build condos, what are you going to do? This requires some sort of, at least a preliminary sketch of what the end-use plan is. That doesn't mean that it's necessarily, um, going to be approved, but at least there's a general concept for what the ultimate use of the property is going to be in the long term. Now, that might be ten years from now, that might be fifteen years from now, it depends on how long it takes actually mine the site, um, but it requires them to at least put together some sort of plan, so we know generally where this is heading over the long term. And then section six, and I think this is the reason why most of the public is, is, is here today, is we have proposed a number of rezonings, and these rezonings are proposed because this is, these rezonings are proposed primarily to correct this error, where we had these properties zoned floodplain, where they really should, they should be zoned something else. Um, and so, there is a map that, um, has been in, in front of you several times, where I sort of have the, I call all the properties that are currently zoned floodplain, and just kind of based on what made the most sense, based on either the master plan, or adjacent zoning, and things like that, um, I've proposed a number of, of zoning changes. So, um, I'm assuming that's, that's what the public comment is going to, to pertain to, and, um, at this point, you can open it up, and if there are questions from you guys, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, let's open it up to you guys first.
Jim Fowler, eight ten Bowles Road, um... I was on city council when Grand Rapids Gravel first came with the proposal that they were going to develop the property west of the park. And something came to me while, while you were talking, um, I'd be very careful what you allow them to do, because of location of city wells, and how that is going to impact the water table that supplies the, the water to the city. Uh, because it's, I was on the Willhead Protection Committee, and that's the same water table that we drink out of. I guess I don't understand the zoning change, uh, Grand Rapids Gravel wants to come in and do something with their piece of property, yet you're impacting, I don't know how many, you know, fifteen or twenty more properties with, with this. I lived, I've lived in that area for the last forty-five years, and it's been underwater plenty of times, particularly two years ago. And to, to take something that's zoned floodplain, that two years ago had four feet of water over it, and zone it R3, I think is giving the wrong message. You can't build there, the DQ won't let you build there, um, so why even put a zoning that would, by underlying zoning, allow you to build there? When there's, the DQ's saying you can't because of, it's going to, whatever you do there, it's going to obstruct water flow. And, you know, and I guess, I didn't, you know, I, I heard you, you talk, I don't understand what the, what your end goal is by, um, causing all the rezoning of the residential properties and the properties that are already there, when, when they are already floodplain, and I understand the overlying district, but it shouldn't be overlying, it should be the only thing that's there, because that's, that's all it is. It, you know, um, once a year, um, it's underwater. Thank you.
My name's Matthew Silverman, own the property of one twenty-five South Division. And I have to agree with him, that every year this name's underwater. In fact, I, I brought pictures, if you guys want to see what it looks like when it's flooded. That's down the street. I moved here, uh, almost four years ago now, with the intention of having a property that would never be condos, that I could look out my back door, and I'd have natural land, and land that I could farm with, and still live close to the city. I know it's a unique thing, but it's also a unique piece of property. Um, instead of being a mostly derelict property that was not intended to by the last owner, we've worked very hard to be a part of the community, um, I think my neighbors would agree to that. We've worked very hard to contribute to the city alone, but it is not a condo establishment, it's not a residential area, it's floodplain. And because it's floodplain, that has allowed us to use the land in a way that it shouldn't be used. The areas by the house have been kept up, worked on hard. We've worked very hard at making sure that this area is attractive, both, you know, visually, we don't obstruct anything, we have not built structures that obstruct the water flow, but the land would be rendered completely useless by this rezoning. It would push us out of the community, and I am highly opposed to this. I think it's damaging language, I think it's wrong, I, I have to agree, or disagree with your statement earlier that this zoning is a mistake, and I think it's proper, I think it should be left how it is. I have no opinion on Grand Rapids Gravel, although I would say, I, I hope it does not affect our water table here along the backside, I mean, it should be for as expensive as it is. it should be for as expensive as it is. But I would be inclined to say that this Grand Rapids gravel should not affect the zoning of the residences, no question here.
These are pictures from a few years ago?
Yes.
How we doing?
Hi.
I'm Steve Morrison, I live at 126 South Vision. I live right across the street from Matt, he's at 125. And I wasn't even aware that this was going on here, that things were being changed. He gave me a copy of this letter, and it said I was supposed to receive this copy of this letter if I lived within 300 feet of proposed change. I live right across the street. He's 125, I'm 126. If you know anything about addresses, you know our front doors are almost lined up. So, with that said, all the neighbors in the neighborhood, nobody got letters, so nobody was aware of what's going on. And if it happened here, did it happen in other places? So I don't think anything should be decided at any point until everybody knows that should know. And as far as, yeah, the old Jim Fowler, when he brought up the water, that kind of concerned me. What's going on in Flint right now? You know, is that going to affect our quality of our water coming through? You know, it's kind of concerning. So I hope the city looks long and hard at, you know, what is actually proposed here, to change all the zoning for, you know, Grand Rapids gravel. Seems kind of politics to me. But, thank you.
Hi, Kathy Burmania, property owner. Properties that I'm identified as owning are 2091 Grand River and 2097 Grand River. In reality, those have been combined, and the address changed. It's now one property with the address of 755 Grand River Southeast, and the property number is, instead of 003 and 006, is 007. And this is the property right here. And I have, we're not living there yet, but I have a long association with the level, going back to when I was nine years old and was in 4H, so I continue that. Now, this property, well, now that it's combined, from here up, is 500-year floodplain. That's 100-year floodplain, and you could almost call it every-year floodplain, because the lower level floods every year. It's certainly changed where we were thinking about putting a house, because it would have to be a houseboat at that point. So, I don't know about the zoning. And I have an urban studies degree, so I'm aware of zoning and how complicated it is. But yeah, to have that whole property identified as suburban residential, there's no way to build on that lower area, just to be aware of it, and kind of looking at that. My next question would be, what does it mean to the property owners? What does this change mean? Are we looking at, say, oh, it's a higher level of zoning, so the taxes are going to go up? What really does it mean to a property owner? What benefit is it to the property owner?
You're talking about the zoning and your property value?
Yes, and the bad floodplain overlay and floodplain.
And I'm not an assessor, but what happens is, is that the assessor does take a look at the property, looks at the neighborhood, looks at the community in general, and tries to match up values with similar properties.
Yes.
The zoning itself doesn't necessarily mean a difference in value, except for the point if it's, if you're, if it's, you can't build anything on it, then obviously, then you're going to have some issues.
Now, this piece of property up here is very high, and I don't think it, that would be a 500-year floodplain, or we're all in trouble.
Well, and again, you know, it depends on
That's not my property, though.
The, you know, the suitability to build, things like that. It's very hard, but the planning commission does, you know, is not, is not really view the property values per se. They're looking at the zoning ordinance, and they're looking at what's the most appropriate zoning. And so that's an issue that will obviously be discussed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Who do you think else would like to come up?
Sue or Dave, could you tell me who all received, possibly received letters? I'm quite sure the city must have sent those out.
There was a 300-foot letter that was done on all of the properties that are listed
Don't think we missed a few, maybe?
Steve.
I think my neighbors did.
Although we have down the street, none of our neighbors did.
All of the addresses came from agents.
Maybe you're one foot off.
Thirty feet away.
Thirty feet's pretty close. All right, so we have some things to think about. Do you guys have any more comments?
I want to check out the water problem.
Yeah, especially with, listen, going on Flint, I mean, I understand that's a real concern, so definitely something worth investigating before we do anything further.
And I guess, just to clarify one thing, by rezoning these properties, we're not taking them out of the floodplain. They're still in the floodplain, they're going to be in the floodplain. There's nothing the city can do about them being in the floodplain, because you can't change
That's federal.
The lay of the land. I mean, it is what it is. And so, this doesn't affect, if it's unbuildable now, it's still going to be unbuildable tomorrow, that's what's determined. So, I mean, the purpose of this wasn't to make anything more developable, or more buildable, or to encourage, you know, multifamily development, or single-family development in areas that are, most of them actually within the floodway, not only the floodplain, but actually the area where there is moving current during the flood. But it's important, for your perspective, that the map and the text be the same, and that's the purpose of doing this. So all of these properties would still be in the floodplain, the map would still show them being in the floodplain, because there would be an overlay with kind of a hatch over it that shows that.
So the only benefit would be they could dig gravel in their backyard?
Not all of them could, most of them, well, some of them could and some of them couldn't. Again, that, that whole part of it would be a completely separate application that we would look at through its own, on its own merit. So, when, if in the way that Grand Rapids gravel comes in, they'll have to submit a whole bunch of information, including information about water and everything else that we would look at before we made a decision.
Right, this wasn't done just so Grand Rapids gravel might come in?
Correct. Although, mining being what it is, and how it's handled by the state, and how the state law kind of has it, is this preferred land use is, you kind of have to allow in some way or another. I think it's important that our ordinance is consistent with how we believe the law is intended for to be in.
But if we don't make the changes, then Grand Rapids gravel will likely not come in. Is that correct?
If they won't be allowed? If we don't make the change, I guess in the ordinance now, they would not be allowed, and then, the, it would be difficult, I'm not an attorney, but legally, I think it would be difficult for the city to just say, "No, you cannot mine this," because the state laws, his State Zoning Enabling Act is written in such a way, that it says that you have to allow extraction by mining unless certain criteria would be met.
But wouldn't it be prudent to proceed with a bit of caution? We have some concerns here, and
Yeah, you know
Especially on the wellhead issue.
Yeah, well, this, again, if, if, if they came in, if Grand Rapids gravel came in tomorrow, the wellhead issue would be something that we would have to look at very, very carefully. And you could, if you found there was going to be some negative impact on that, that could be justification to say no to them. But, this isn't, this, this wouldn't allow them to come in and start digging tomorrow without going through the process and without getting everything checked out. There's a lot of permitting they would need to get, there's a lot of review that the city would need to do, including you guys, on the application. It would likely be a couple of months' process at least. And while you, you could say no, I mean, it's hard, but you can do it, but you have to have the recent report, obviously. And you would have to look at everything that they submitted, all of the impacts, all the environmental stuff. You could do, you could do your own studies, or require them to do additional studies, if it was necessary. So, that doesn't necessarily impact a lot of the concerns that some of the folks are experiencing, that way to the east of them. But I just wanted to clarify that practically, nothing is changing on any of these properties.
Jim Fowler, 10 Gold Road. I just, from my time on wellhead protection, there is a map that was developed through state and federal funding, that shows water flow and the aquifers that are underground and all of that. And it's somewhere in the archives that, here in the building, that there has been that study from here, and all the way around the city, on where the water that we actually drink comes from underground. So, that one study has been done, so you probably want to dig that up and have a look at it.
And it's my understanding that they would have to do it the right way, regardless of whether the zoning changes or not.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks.
We don't allow mining in the city right now?
Yes, you do.
What's this all about, with the mining? You're saying that they, you stopped them before coming in trying to mine a couple, few years ago. I'm sure Dave remembers that.
Um, I'm just trying to think, they talked about it for some time.
They were moving dirt down the end of the road, and you get
Yeah, there was some
So there's no mining
We have, we have mining over on Grand River with dairy growers.
They stopped Grand Rapids gravel before down there a few years ago.
What's that now?
They stopped Grand Rapids gravel pulling out of there before.
Okay.
A few years ago. Something changed since then?
I don't know, I haven't been involved with them for some time.
So, how, how you stopped them before?
Well, I'm not saying that you can't, but I just don't remember the specific details.
I have one more concern, it's Matthew Silverman, 125 South Division. Looking at rezoning the property 125 South Division, it's listed as multifamily residential from the floodplain. There would be zoning concerns with that, with my current use of the property. Would it make more sense than to rezone that if you were going to rezone that to suburban residential district, which would fit the use of the property and the intent of the property? I just wondered how that could be addressed. And what changes, if this was changed to multifamily residential, would that make rezoning ordinances? Which, is my understanding, is it don't currently apply to the flood zone? If you change it to an overlay district, that would change it, wouldn't it?
Well, the property is, it's currently zoned floodplain, so the standards of the overlay of that district apply. And because the entire property is within the floodplain overlay, it would continue to apply even if it were to be zoned. To your first question, could we change it to suburban residential to, or, yeah, from R3 to suburban residential? Probably. I will say why not. If you don't have any intention on ever doing anything with it, and you want it to stay that way, I don't personally have an issue with it. I would want it to go to a different district.
Yeah, we do plan it with it, we just don't plan on building it.
Would anybody out there want to give us a tour? I'd love to walk your property with you and see your concerns.
Anytime.
Okay, my name's Alan T. Linder, and I'm pretty accessible through the website, and just Google my name and you'll find my number. I'd love to spend some time with you. And there's some people that maybe didn't get a notice of this.
We can, we can take a look and see what addresses.
I'd like to try to find a way to make this work for all of us, and protect the wellheads, and protect the ground table too, water tables. So, yeah, I'd be honored. If you want my number, I'd give it to you after the meeting, come up here.
Are you, are you suggesting that tabling the issue until we get more information?
I want to be cautious on this, yeah. And, does it have to take a motion to do that?
Yeah, I would say
Let's find out, are there any more
Any more concerns?
Questions? As we move forward.
I should table? Well, I think you'd, I don't think you've closed the public hearing, public hearing either, so
Close, right.
There's no other comments, you should do that.
Yes. There are no other comments? All right, so anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to close hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Close. All right, it's closed?
Like to make a motion to table this, for further study?
Second. Do you want to table it until the next meeting?
Sure. And, and to also notify as many people that maybe we didn't get in touch with.
This will be, this will be looked at, and then
Okay.
Just to make sure.
If there's an issue, is there, is there any way we can expand it? I mean, if 30 feet is the difference, can we?
I guess, I don't want to say too much
Yeah, sure.
To actually see what's going on. We want to make sure that the public has been given their chance to receive that information, and you want to make sure that you're doing some further research on it, and then also to receive any further public comments on the proposed ordinance.
Jim, Matt, Steve, Kathy, and Richard, I'd like to at least get back with you with some answers and concerns you guys addressed tonight. Maybe it might not be the best thing you want to hear, but it'll at least be something to get back with you on, so just be transparent. I think that's what we all, those residents tonight.
Did we make the motion?
I made the motion, did you second it?
Yeah. All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Close. All right.
So it'll be brought up at the next meeting?
It will be brought up at the next meeting. Let's move on to staff.
And if it's next week, it should be April 11.
April 11. All right, let's move on to the staff report.
I have nothing to report.
All right, Commissioner remarks?
I know at the last city council meeting, there were two candidates that had applied for planning commission, and I don't know exactly why they weren't talked about. I know one of the commissioners said that, he didn't have time, but I think the other four probably had plenty of time to review them, so I'm hoping at the next city council meeting, we at least bring them up for discussion. I know there was some talk about one, couldn't still do it for a couple of months, I don't know, I don't know who that is, but I know the other one can do immediately, so I hope something moves, get a few more people on this.
I was really disappointed that we couldn't put two people on that, on the board at the last meeting. I'll be pushing for doing something at the next meeting.
The, I do have one other thing, Andy, this might help you a little bit. The old Superior Bill, when they were talking about in order to get some tax credit for the brewery, they may have to change that to industrial. Is that zoned industrial today, or are we going to have to make a change in that?
It's zoned mixed use.
So that should fall under the industrial?
Well, the, I don't know why they would need to do that
Was that the, I just
Perspective, but they
Well, you have to understand, you're looking at industrial zoning, then you're also looking at this under the, under the tax code.
Right, exactly.
And it's under Public Act 198 of 1974, which allows for industrial tax abatement. And the uses that are being proposed, the brewery itself is an industrial use. Mixed use allows several uses together. So, basically, you're looking at how a property is valued. When a industrial district is established, then the property owner can seek tax abatement, which means up to 50% of new value that's been put in there. So, you're going to see some, obviously, some rehabilitation of that building. And you can get up to 50% two to 12 years. We have a number of industrial facilities that have done this. And so, basically, it's another tool that can be used to help further develop, to redevelop property. But you have to look at industrial in two ways. You have that as a zoning district, then also you're looking at it in terms of assessments. And it's You have that as a zoning district, and then also you're looking at it in terms of assessments. It's two separate things. You can look at some properties that the way the assessor looks at it, the way that the, the planning commission looks at it in terms of the zoning ordinance, so there's some differences between the two, so.
So, how it says today that property is owned correctly?
It's owned correctly, because you're looking, another thing too, is you're looking at the, at this brewery that's going to have a restaurant in it. That's a mixed use. You're having a brewery which is industrial use, you're having a restaurant which is a commercial use, and so, you know, you're looking at two separate things. The value add for the restaurant does not qualify because that's not an industrial use, but that brewery is, and even though it's, it's a mixed use, it's still allowed within that district. And again, when you're looking at it in terms of assessments, then you're looking at it as an industrial use, and that's the way the state would look at it when you're looking at assessments.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other remarks? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? All right, it is, we'll have 7:51.